Unmuted.
Hello, my name is Isabella Perez, Recreation Leader for the City of Socorro. Thank you for joining today's meeting. Before the meeting begins, we would like to remind our guests to remove all hats and silence all electronic devices. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated and violate your subject to ejection and possible prosecution.
Hola, mi nombre es Judy Rodriguez, Secretaria de Planificación de la Ciudad de Socorro. Gracias por participar en la reunión de hoy. Antes de que comience la reunión, nos gustaría recordarles a nuestros invitados favor de quitarse los sombreros y silenciar todos los dispositivos electrónicos. No se tolerará ningún comportamiento perturbador ni exabrupto, y los infractores estarán sujetos a expulsión y posible procesamiento.
It is 6:08 PM. This meeting is called to order. Item number two, Pledge of Allegiance and a Moment of Silence led by the Socorro High School Varsity and JV Cheerleaders. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, Texas pledge, and please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to me Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Now please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may now be seated. Thank you very much. Item number three, Establishment of Quorum.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Here.
Alejandro Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Ivy Avalos.
Here.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Here.
Mayor, we would also like to acknowledge Commissioner Lianna Olgin.
Welcome.
Welcome. Item number four, Public Comment.
Mayor, we have one speaker, Commissioner Lianna Olgin. Ms. Olgin, you have three minutes.
Mayor, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Mr. Cruz?
At this time, I want to make a motion to go ahead and disregard the allotted three minutes. Since there's only one speaker at this time, if the Commissioner would like to take a little bit more time than three minutes, I think we should grant her the respect and the ability to do so.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Representative.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes. Thank you, and I promise I'll be sure. I know that you have a lot of important business to get to and a lot of people that very deservedly are going to be recognized tonight. I am here to address this council on the topic of public transportation here in the city of Socorro. I heard several troubling statements made during the last meeting of this council and felt the need to address some of those statements myself, which is why I am here tonight. The county commissioned the Texas Transportation Institute to conduct a study to look at improving and expanding bus service, which resulted in the formation of a regional transit agency known as the El Paso Area Transportation Services, LGC, as you all know. The goal of the LGC is to give every participating municipality a seat at the table so that every decision regarding services is made by all of the member agencies and not just by the county, as had been historically the case. County staff conducted presentations to Socorro prior to and after the formation of the LGC in December of 2022. I myself have been at two presentations given to this council, as well as participated in a one-on-one meeting with the city manager, Ms. Rolarte, and I did that in an effort to try to ensure that all of the city of Socorro's concerns were properly addressed. Unfortunately, at the June 1st meeting of this body, you voted not to join the LGC for fiscal year '23. And then at the July 6th meeting, you voted not to join the LGC for fiscal year '24 and instead conduct your own study to determine the need for bus service and the cost of establishing such bus service. The city manager pointed out that this study could cost between $100,000 to $120,000, which is actually more than the fiscal year '23 contribution amount to the LGC for the city of Socorro and only slightly less than the proposed fiscal year '24 amount, which was released yesterday at the LGC's monthly meeting. So rather than contribute a comparable amount for existing and expanding services, which would have included six brand-new bus shelters valued at over $300,000, this council opted to spend funds on a study that can take, according to the city manager, anywhere from six months to a year to complete. And that's just the study. How much time will it take to obtain the funding for the bus service once the study is complete? Or to get the buses purchased and the routes started? The bus shelters designed and built and the transit station established? Will it take two years, three years, maybe more? In the meantime, what will the citizens of Socorro who rely on public transportation do? How will residents get to work? How will students get to school? How will elderly individuals get to the grocery store? Socorro has three ADA vans, with two more coming soon, as the city manager reported at the last meeting. But do we really believe that these five vans will be able to meet the public transportation needs of a city with a population of over 30,000 people? Right before the vote at the July 6th meeting, the city's auditor gave his report for fiscal year 2022. He stated that Socorro had net income of $4 million for the year, which is a very good financial position for the city of Socorro. Sadly, this council nonetheless decided that investing in the public transportation system that serves this community was not a priority. And that is certainly the right of this council. You all can decide that there are more important projects to spend your money on than the public bus service. But this council must take responsibility for that decision and be truthful and honest with its citizens. The public speaker from the July 6th meeting, Mr. Renee Rodriguez, stated that the county was terminating the bus service, and he said that he was sad to see me do this to the citizens of Socorro. This is not true. Socorro may end up without bus service in the future, not because of any action that the county took, but because the five of you voted to not participate in the program. If the five routes in Socorro end up being eliminated, it will be because you all voted against it. I was also sad to hear someone say that Socorro would not have had a say on the LGC board, implying that the county would just do whatever it wanted anyway. This is also not true, as the sole purpose of the LGC is to give everyone a voice and everyone a seat at the table. In closing, I hope that you reconsider your prior actions and reconsider joining the LGC in fiscal year 2024 to avoid a disruption in public transportation services for the residents of Socorro. Please know that the LGC continues to want to work with the city of Socorro and that my office would be more than happy to help with and facilitate that collaboration with the LGC. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mayor, those are all our speakers.
Thank you. Moving on to presentations, item number five, Memorial and Resolution for Jesús Salvador Chui Hernández.
Hello and good evening, everyone. Check, check. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Check, check. There? Better? Okay. Hello and good evening, everyone. It is my esteemed honor to be able to share a few words for one of the city's beloved members, Mr. Jesús Salvador Hernández, or Chui, as our community members knew him. Mr. Hernández served not only his beautiful city of Socorro, but his country as well. Representative Hernández was a decorated war hero, as well as a city council member, holding positions of Representative of District 1 and 5, as well as Mayor Pro Tem in his civil service career. He oversaw city development from early on in incorporation to the blooming leader in civic engagement that it is today. Representative Hernández worked to help not only establish the city's public works department, convert our city into a home rule type of city, create organization, structure, and overall quality of life for the past, present, and future generations, but also had a passion for Veterans Affairs, progressing our city, and maintaining our city be a united city. To know Mr. Hernández was to love him. He is remembered in life by not only the proud constituents of Socorro, but more importantly, his brothers and sisters, his veteran brothers and sisters, and his beloved dear family. At this time, the city would like to share a small tribute to the life of our very own Mr. Jesús Salvador Chui Hernández and our sincerest gratitude for a long life of service. Rest easy knowing that the next generation will continue your fight to better our beautiful city of Socorro. At this time, we have a tribute. Representative Hernández served as Alderman Place 5 in 1988, council member for Place 1 in 1998, as well as councilman Place 1 in early 2000 and Mayor Pro Tem in 2000, what went on to serve with the Socorro Veterans Association as well, to have a well-life of municipal civil service for over 20 years. At this time, I'd like to honor our city council by sharing a few words if they'd like, and I know Mayor has a few things that she'd like to read as well. Whereas the city council of the city of Socorro has learned with profound sorrow of the death of former Honorable District 1 Representative Jesús Salvador Hernández, and whereas Jesús Salvador Hernández was for many years a leader in the state of Texas in public life and distinguished himself for his character and devotion to the interests and growth of the city of Socorro and won for himself the respect and affection of the public for his services to the community, not only as a private citizen, but as a public servant in the many civil and military offices which he held. And whereas retired veteran Jesús Salvador Hernández served as Specialist 4 for the United States Army, serving from October 10th, 1968 to 20 August, 1970, during the Vietnam War with HH-2 Battalion 11th at 101st Airborne Division, Air Mobile, Vietnam, his service and dedication to duty earned him the designation of Honorable Discharge upon retirement of service. Whereas his integrity, ability, and devotion to his country, its citizens, and his family established him to make a substantial and valuable contribution to the city of Socorro, state of Texas, and his country. Now therefore be it resolved by Mayor Ivy Avalos and the city council of Socorro that by the death of the former Honorable District 1 Representative Jesús Salvador Hernández, the city of Socorro and the community as a whole has been left without a beloved and distinguished citizen. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread among the community and minutes of this council and that a copy suitably engrossed be sent to the family of the laid Jesús Salvador Hernández in testimony of the sympathy of the city of Socorro in their bereavement. Would the family of Mr. Hernández please step forward? I'm sorry, would any of the council like to make any comments? Okay, go ahead and step forward, please.
Everybody, thank you for coming. My dad was good. I was God for a lifetime in service too. I miss him so much right now, but he's looking at us right now, taking care of us. Thank you, guys.
Item number six, Recognition to congratulate the Socorro High School Varsity Cheer Team and the JV Cheer Team at 2023 UTEP Cheer Camp.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mr. Reyes, would you like to go first, or would you like me to go first?
No, you go and then.
Okay. It is my esteemed honor to let the public, as well as our city council, know that we have some
that we have some award winners within our own high school. It is today that we celebrate and honor the achievements of the Socorro High School cheerleaders. This past UTEP Cheer Camp, Socorro High School won overall sportsmanship, top high school, and grand champions of the entire event, beating out over 700 teams. Under the direction of Coach Karina Arredondo, it is my honor to present to you the JV and Varsity Cheer Team today. Ladies, as a token of our appreciation, mayor and council would like to bestow upon your coach and yourselves some applause. If you'd like to go forward. With the, let's see, Varsity, please stand on this side, and JV on this side, please. We would also like to mention that the Socorro High School cheerleaders will also be featured this year in the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. I know Representative Reyes would like to share a few words, so I'll go ahead and pass along the microphone to him.
I was gonna give him the surprise. The reason they're here is because of the invite they got to the Macy's Parade. So they're going to be representing our city for this year's Thanksgiving Parade. Where's the coach? She left. We just wanna thank you, everybody in the team. Thank you for everything you've been doing with the team. We really appreciate you.
Moving on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to consent agenda? Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro García?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia López?
Yes.
Moving on to regular agenda. Item number 10. Public hearing of an ordinance approving a rezoning of Block One, Lot Two, Sombra de Piro, located at 566 Buford, Socorro, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Light Commercial to allow for a parking area. It is 6:34 PM. Public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak on this item? As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at 6:34 PM. Item number 11. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance approving a rezoning of Block One, Lot Two, Sombra de Piro, located at 566 Buford, Socorro, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Light Commercial to allow for a parking area. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve? Second.
Good evening, mayor and council. Lorene Quimido, city planner. For your consideration today is a rezoning request of 566 Buford Road. The zoning is currently R1, and the property is within the Mission Trail Historic District. The lot is approximately 29,534 square feet. The current land use is vacant, and for the future land use projected for this parcel, it is a recommended single-family residential. The proposed land use would be Light Commercial to allow for parking and a ponding area. Again, in summary of the request, they are requesting a rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Light Commercial to allow for commercial vehicle parking. Planning and zoning staff recommend approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission met at their June 20th meeting and recommended approval for the item as well. The next slide shows the location map. The property is just southeast of the intersection of Buford and Socorro Road. It's currently zoned R1. The adjacent property is largely R1 with commercial C1 zoning to the south. The next slide is an aerial photo, I'm sorry, pictures of the property. At the top is the view from Belen Road, and on the bottom is a view from Buford Road. An aerial photograph shows the property and surrounding area. Public notice was sent to property owners within 200 feet of the applicant property. No notifications were received in writing, either protest or in favor of the request. The property is a part of the Sombra de Piro subdivision, which was submitted and approved by council in December of 2022. This is one depiction of the site plan and what they're hoping for the, planning for the parking. They then later submitted an additional site plan to hopefully clarify what they were wishing to accomplish. Again, initially plans for the parking with the potential in the future to grow that and provide parking for additional businesses in the area along Socorro Road. With that, staff can answer any questions, and the applicants are also in attendance if they would like to say anything.
Mr. Llos?
Can you tell me what businesses are around this particular plot that they're trying to change?
Yes, the Sombra de Piro subdivision. One, C1, just to the south is the wind down that just recently opened. And across Belen is... Bode Galoya. There is another additional business up farther north, which is a mechanic shop. Even though that doesn't show on the zoning map as commercial, it might be illegal non-conforming commercial use.
Any other questions? Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro García?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia López?
Yes.
Item number 12. Public hearing of an ordinance approving a rezoning of Track 1-8-8, Lay Clark Survey Number 293, Abstract 6257, located at 1221 Jaime Road, Socorro, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential to C2 General Commercial with a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial truck parking. It is 6:39 PM. Public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak on this item? As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at 6:40 PM. Item number 13. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance approving a rezoning of Track 1-8-8, Lay Clark Survey 293, Abstract 6257, located at 1221 Jaime Road, Socorro, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential to C2 General Commercial with a conditional use permit to allow for commercial truck parking. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve? Second.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor and council. This rezoning request is for 1221 Jaime Road. The zoning is currently R1 residential, single-family residential. The lot is 2.13 acres in size. The land use is residential. Land use proposed is C2 General Commercial with a conditional use permit to allow for commercial truck parking. In summary, the approval is again a request for rezoning from R1 to C1 with a conditional use permit. Planning and zoning staff recommends approval. Planning and zoning commission voted for approval at their June 20th meeting. The location is just northwest of Horizon Boulevard and the Gateway. There is a very diverse mix of zoning in this area. As you can see from the zoning map, this property is residential, but another residential zoning surrounded by commercial, C1, C2, and what remains of the M1, M2 zoning districts, and some unclassified zoning as well. So those are in gray. The next slide is some photographs looking at the property from Jaime Road. This was a notice of violation and which probably instigated the rezoning request as there were already some truck parking on the property. Here is again an aerial photograph. You can see some of the land adjacent to. The property is vacant and a mix of commercial trucking, kind of mechanical uses. Property owners within 200 feet of the affected property were notified, and no comments were received in writing either for or against the request. Here is a site plan depicting what the property owner would like to have on the property with the truck parking, ponding to the rear, and the building would remain. Again, a summary of the request. They are asking for a rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential to C2 General Commercial with a conditional use permit to allow for commercial truck parking. Additionally, a requirement will be before any permits are issued that they plat the property as it's still in tract form. With that, staff can answer any questions? And I do not see the applicant in need.
Questions?
What are staff's recommendations?
To approve the request. There is a need for commercial truck parking.
This is up there by McDonald's, right?
Yes. So if we go back to the location, or maybe the aerial might show some part of Horizon, but the next, so Jaime leads to, will get you to Stockyard, which will then get you to Horizon. No, it's just, Horizon is just at the bottom of the photograph. But yes, it is in that general area.
Okay. Thank you.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro García?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia López?
Yes.
Item number 14. Public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Lot Four, Block E, Viñedo Acres, located at 345 Tokay Avenue, Socorro, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential to RM1 Mobile Home Subdivision District to allow the placement of mobile homes. It is 6:45 PM. Public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak on this item? As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at 6:46 PM. Item number 15. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Lot Four, Block E, Viñedo Acres, located at 345 Tokay Avenue, Socorro, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential to RM1 Mobile Home Subdivision District to allow the placement of mobile homes. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Motion. To approve. Second.
Thank you, mayor and council. For your consideration of this request for a rezoning at 345 Tokay Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential to RM1 Mobile Home Subdivision District. The lot size is one acre. It is currently residential, and the proposed land, future land use is residential as well. Planning and zoning staff recommend approval. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval at their June 20th meeting. The location of the property, Tokay Avenue, in the Viñedo Acres subdivision. It is currently zoned, R1 Single Family Residential. It is surrounded by R1 Single Residential zoning, and there have been some zoning amendments, requests approved in the subdivision to R2. These are property photographs taken from Tokay, and the bottom photograph shows the currently, the current mobile home that is on the existing lot. Here is an aerial photograph. The property that is requesting the zoning change is toward the top part of the aerial photograph. It's a little too far zoomed out at this scale, but there are... It's a little too far zoomed out at this scale, but there are other mobile, mobile home, mobile homes throughout the, throughout the subdivision. Property owners were notified of, within 200 feet of the property, no notices were received against the request. The applicant did reach out to neighbors to let them know what he was planning on doing and asking for their support in this request, so he did, I believe that's the next slide, provide a letter showing their support of the request. Here is a site plan, in gray is the existing mobile home, and then, this is the first step in allowing them to have the mobile homes, additional mobile homes on the lot, and the next step, should you approve this request, is for them to come back and subdivide so that they can place the other mobile homes on the now three lots. In summary, the request is for a rezoning from R1 single-family residential to M1 Mobile Home Subdivision District to allow for the placement of mobile homes. With that, staff can answer any questions that the council might have.
Ms. Yellos?
So, you mentioned three lots, how much, what's the total square footage of all three combined?
The, the initial 1.045, four, six acres.
Four, six acres, how many mobile homes will?
What, each lot is only allowed to have one mobile home placed on it.
So, we're, we're looking at two additional mobile homes?
Yes.
Oh, okay, 'cause it's, and that's considered a park?
No, 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 no.
Just an RM?
RM.
Okay.
That subdivision.
Gotcha, I thought it was, I was like, that's too many, or that, I don't know how many they were gonna put on there. Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Will they be conforming with the current ordinance that we have to?
Yes, they have to abide by all of the requirements, that the mobile homes be of a certain age and above.
Double wide?
Yes.
And so forth? Okay. Any other questions? Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopez.
Yes.
Item number 16, public hearing of an ordinance to ratify the updated bylaws of the Board of Adjustments, Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4 Boards, Commissions, Agencies, and Authorities, Division 3 Board of Adjustments of the Munich Code. It is 6:51 PM, public hearing is now open. As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at 6:51 PM. Item number 17, second reading and adoption of an ordinance to ratify the updated bylaws of the Board of Adjustments, Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4 Boards, Commission, Commission, Agencies, and Authorities, Division 3 Board of Adjustments of the Munich Code.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Board of Adjustments voted to update its bylaws after the city council approved amendments to the City Ordinance, Chapter 2 Administrative, Administration, Article 4 Boards, Commissions, Agencies, and Authorities. So this is just following up with that approval by the Board of Adjustments so that city council could approve those bylaws as well.
Questions?
No.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopez.
Yes.
Moving on to Grants Department, item number 18, discussion in action to approve Resolution 758 authorizing the city of Socorro to submit a grant application to the Office of the Governor's Fiscal Year 2022, Operation Stone Garden, OPSG, to fund overtime for officers supporting the border initiative. There is no match requirement for this grant.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Alejandro Valdez, City Development Director. We are here requesting your approval of a resolution to continue your participation in the Operation Stone Garden program. The city of Socorro Police Department has participated in this program since FY 2015. This resolution is required as part of the grant program in order to continue to participate.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopez.
Yes.
Item number 19, discussion in action to approve supplemental agreement number one to work authorization number two for contract number 220701 with Camacho Hernandez and Associates LLC to revise quantities in Exhibit D. This is a no-cost supplemental agreement.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, we are requesting your approval for supplemental agreement number one for the existing contract with Camacho Hernandez Associates to address some administrative discrepancies in Exhibit C, I'm sorry, D. There is no increase or decrease in the budget, this just corrects some of those discrepancies that we identified in the exhibit.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopez.
Yes.
Item number 20, discussion in action to approve task authorization number one under work authorization number one of contract number 22-07-02 with CEA Group to develop preliminary engineering design packs, packets for park improvements at various locations citywide.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, we are requesting your approval for task authorization number one with a maximum amount payable of $65,292.55 for the development of preliminary engineering design packets for park improvements at Six Parks. As you recall, the Six Parks were discussed in the Capitol Workshop meeting on June 3, 2023, and so now we bring you that cost estimate for the engineers to start working on that, those improvements.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopez.
Yes.
Item 21, discussion in action to approve Resolution 759 authorizing amendment number one to the advanced funding agreement, AFA, FA, between the Texas Department of Transportation and the city of Socorro for Artorial 1, 1682 Boulevard Project.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, we are requesting your approval on this amended, amendment to the existing advanced funding agreement for the Artorial, Artorial 1 project. This amendment increases federal and state funding available for pre-construction engineering by $1.3 million. That budget, updated budget is included in your backup.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopez.
Yes.
Moving on, city manager, item number 22, discussion in action to appoint interim Chief of Police Jason Stanzioni to the 911 District Board.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, due to Chief Burden's resignation, we would like to appoint our interim Chief Stanzioni to the 911 District to represent the city of Socorro at that board. Do y'all have any questions, concerns?
No, represent us well.
I'm sorry?
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopez.
Yes.
Item number 23, discussion in action to ratify approval of the issuance of the fiscal year ending September 30, 2022, annual financial report by SBNG Certified Public Accountants.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, at our last council meeting, we, the auditors presented the report, unfortunately, there was no motion to approve at that time, so there was no vote taken, and that's why we're here, is to make sure that we receive the vote for approval so we can file.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopez.
Yes.
Mayor?
Mr. Garcia?
Motion to, item 24?
Go ahead, we need items 24, 26, and 27.
I'm sorry, items 24, 25, 26, and 27.
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lopez.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting adjourns at 6:59 PM. Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Meeting adjourns at 6:59 PM.
Wow, it's record time, right?
Goodbye.